All right, welcome to the meeting for August 12th. Please stand for pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. You may be seated. Because this is the regular board meeting for August 12th, 2025. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No.
There's a board recognition on here. I assume that was a, I saw that on the agenda.
Yeah.
Approval of the consent agenda.
Can you speak up just a little bit? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
He was just saying the board recognition didn't get taken off the agenda.
Yeah, I was kind of asking, I didn't think there was any.
All right, so you have the minutes, claims, agenda. You're also have the list of fall coaches, including volunteer coaches in there. Personal report, I'll read through that. Anna Hoffman, so these are leaves. Anna Hoffman, teacher at Lancaster. That's effective on October 3rd. Zach Teepel, teacher Lancaster, and that is effective September 1st. Joe Kaufman, bus driver, effective August 11th. Nicole Smytheley, bus driver.
three years of two and a half million dollar projects. The idea would be you could authorize them today. You don't need to do any of them. You could do one of them, you could do 10 of them in that amount of money. You can do one now, skip three years until the next time you need it and do something. You know, so it's a flexibility, get that approval in place, go through the steps one time. But then, the first issue in the green represents two and a half million dollars. So that answers the question of at least where we've thrown a first number at. Two and a half million dollars of bond proceeds to go towards a project, plus 155,000 estimated cost of issuance, gets us a borrowing estimate of the 2,655. But if we were to seek an approval for three times that, you could then, if you work through the process and need less than that, more than that, anything under the total, you could take out whenever you needed. And then, as you go down the road, use it if you need it, or don't use it. But we get ahead of ourselves in case our friends in the legislature work again next session and want to change your bonding rules again. So that's kind of what we do have a lot of schools looking at. We have some that have gone out and said, what do I need for the next 10 years? I'm going to put an approval in for 50 million dollars, even though I'm talking about 2 million dollars this year. But we think we need a renovation of another school in there. They're seeking those approvals now. And then, if it comes to be, they're in place. If not, you don't have to do anything. And that is the thing. Tonight, we're talking about purely presenting this to you as a basis for you to advertise or put out a notice, to have a hearing to start the process. If you're interested in doing something to address some of these needs.
There's no decision, like you're not, there's no decision being made even just to authorize. Even you're basically, you're authorizing the conversation.
Yeah.
You're not authorized or committing to anything.
And then, once you, if you do proceed to have some hearing, then you would be, if you're interested in this process, you would be seeking approval for a maximum number. But again, not locking in to that just as not to exceed without going through the process again. So then, as you develop your list, as you work down through that, decide how you're going to utilize the funds on hand, where those needs are, you then can pick and choose how you want to do that. Whether that's a bond issue this year, next year, and the next year, or this year, or then two years from now, or, you know. However, to help as we all step through the new Senate Enrolled Act, power you can handle operations funds, you'll see a new assessed value before any of this process happens. So that will help us hone in a little bit. But the idea is tonight to at least present to you the concept of you could proceed with just the bond issue you need, or try to pick a number out there that is reasonable because we know your list has, you have quite a few things on your list, as well as we aren't sure how heavy the impacts on operations fund is going to be over the next few years. And leaving something flexible is kind of our thought there. Questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, does, just take for example the three-year, or call five-year, just.
Yeah.
And if we said, yeah, we want one every year, is that, is that utilizing? Because in the meeting, the last meeting we had, the work session, they talked about how we need to change the conversation from the tax rate to the tax levy.
In this case, we're using the tax levy.
Okay, and so it would be keeping. We need to make it as simple as possible for all of us that are sitting at home getting our tax bill, saying, oh, the school raised it, or something like that, which we don't want to have happen. So can, I guess, can you explain what that would mean levy-wise?
Yeah, let's go back to that graph there. So that represents the levy that you are paying in debt service, not the tax rate. The tax rate changes every year based on your assessed value.
Now it will.
Yes, you have historically kept your tax rate as constant. And then, the levy has changed, or the receipts of funds, the revenue has changed.
So just so people understand, with, with the new bill that passed, that is changing, has nothing to do with anything we've done.
Excellent point.
And so essentially, given that, we could not take out any additional debt, and our tax rate could still go up.
Yes, so the Senate Enrolled Act made a lot of changes to the way the net assessed value is calculated through various credits and exemptions and changes over the now through '31. And most of those forecasts showed a declining assessed value, even though your gross assessed value continues to grow as you've seen. But the net assessed value, which is what the tax rate is calculated on, has been through legislative action, is going to be reduced. Now, organic growth can offset that, but based on, nothing you have control over, your tax rate will vary based on that assessed value. So the thought is that now maybe we need to all start talking about levy. And in this case, we know what you are required, what you need in 2026, and then on out. So the thought today is, well, within your current levy, something you can control, and exactly where you are in not increasing the requirement to pay off debt, fill that gap, and the tax rate will fluctuate depending on what your assessed value does. If it grows greater than the legislative action, you will see a tax rate decrease. If you, if the legislative action is, overpowers the natural growth, you're going to see a tax rate increase. Now, the total dollars raised is going to stay the same, but the way it's impacted bills will be tied directly to the simple math of net assessed value, based on how much money you need to raise.
And I think that's essentially important. We could take out no debt and the tax rate could go up. We could take out debt and the tax rate could actually still go down.
Yes, yeah.
So that three, or five, or 10, whatever we decide arbitrary number, you're, so now that we've had that discussion, it's going to base it on our current tax levy? Which, so if we did a five-year one, we as a board would be saying, we are not raising the levy, we're basically keeping taxes the same. What you pay in taxes may go up or down based on your assessed value still. Is that correct?
If we go to the next slide, you'll see the three colors, the light green, orange, and yellow are my simulating the three tranches of two and a half million, or 2.65 million dollars, done annually for the next three years. But you'll see, those are all within your 2025 levy. I haven't included tax rate at all. It's truly, how much money do you need to pay off the debt? And that becomes the cap. To the extent you issue less, to the extent you arbitrarily want to go lower, you have that flexibility to the extent you need to do 3 million dollars first. That all fits within, we just changed those amortizations to fit within that levy cap. And again, the board can decide whether they want to be inside or outside that cap. I just think you historically have done a very good job of managing tax rate. I think as a board, you can continue to do a very good job managing levy.
So what, mine's kind of changes.
Yeah, mine changes.
Can you explain if we did not, or if we did a five-year, or a 20-year, and then all of a sudden we need to build a new natorium for 15 million dollars? Can you explain how these geo-bonds affect something like that?
Okay, so once you sell the bonds and lock in an amortization, that will be part of your total levy. So to the, if we have that illustration right there, and you need to do a 15 million dollar natorium issue next year, and we've sold bonds that are taking that levy, you have two choices. One, you delay the project, or if you put it on top, it could increase that levy. And you would have to then ask your taxpayers to support you in something that has an increased levy. To the extent you have an idea that, well, we can, we really think we can get by for the next four or five years, then some structure like this, just like you've done through all these projects, in leaving notches for future needs, would be the same kind of scenario there. And to the extent you, you know, I do have schools that under that scenario right there might say, well, I want a 25 million dollar approval. Now, are you ready to tell your public about those needs? And have a good enough number to go that way? So that, that's that trade-off. Here, you've already done a very good job of identifying needs to fit within a general obligation type window to the extended natorium. If you know those numbers, that's something you could consider. If you don't and aren't as comfortable, that may have to be something that is another hearing. And all this does is keep you from going through that hearing process multiple times. To the extent next spring, you need to start a pool project, you start the process at that point. To the extent you knew, you know what you need now, you could lump those all together and, and spend the money as needed. But, does that help, understanding the way that dynamic works?
So historically, we've closed on a bond, we've drawn down those funds immediately. In this scenario, you're indicating we would draw as needed, so that we're not.
Actually, in this scenario, I would still borrow generally as needed. We can keep the money for about three years before you have to deal with arbitrage and rebate to the IRS on earnings and things. The way this is set up is I'm showing an approval for a total project, but then borrowing as needed within a year or two window, so.
That's kind of what I was asking. Because we typically, in the last two bonds, we wanted, what, three and a half? We pulled three and a half.
Yeah.
In this scenario, you're saying, we're going to approve seven point, hypothetically, not saying we are. We would approve 7.9, but we'd only draw two and a half.
Yes, you would draw as, as you, as you need it, or as you see the timing of your projects. It's some, it could be larger upfront, it could be, oh, well, I really want to do it all now, but scheduling is not going to allow me. So then, we would work with you to say, what's the cost of borrowing now versus waiting? Versus, I need to order HVAC equipment, you know? All of those kind of things, you borrow as needed.
And the smart thing about that too is the landscape could change from like this fall to, you know, two years from now, three, whatever. You may look at it and say, okay, or next year even, say, okay, we're, two points is all we're going to do, we're not, we're actually not going to.
And there are means of change in every conversation we have.
Well, a pool, for example, is a great example. I mean, we didn't know.
The philosophy was a.
Yeah, that's a good example too. But we didn't know that the pool was going to keep leaking, keep leaking, keep leaking, and then finally found a solution that should fix it for, you know, at least 10 years, if not longer. And we were able to do that. Well, that had some costs to it, but we did it. Didn't know that that was going to be, you know, two years ago, we didn't know that was a solution that was out there, so.
So essentially, and I think this is an important thing for the board to understand.
Also, think of this as a line of credit.
Yeah.
It's, it's the concept of a line of credit.
Correct, however.
You're paying on it.
You're not paid until I'm buying it. That's what's different.
But the other thing that's important for, I think, the board to understand is, essentially what we're saying is we're going to do one public process and not four.
Or three, or whatever.
Or three, whatever, that, yeah, three, I guess, so.
I put too many colors there, screwed you up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because the blue, the blue's still the asset.
Yeah.
So the green, and I think that's where we have to wrap our hands around. One, do we do it? And two, do we do what we need and allow for a public process every time we have a need?
Yes, and I've picked three. It could be one, two, four, six, you know, projects. But you're, I think you're exactly right. It's trying to facilitate the flexibility you as a board to go through if you have enough project, potential projects, that you feel comfortable sharing that in a, in a process for a bigger approval, and then pair, use it as needed. And again, you don't have to pay because until you issue the bonds, you have no obligation out there.
And when we issue the bonds, because it's, you know, it's a year at a time, like let's say we issued them this year, and then two years down the road, the 10-year treasury is half of what it is, we are borrowing at that rate, correct? We're not locking it in?
Exactly. Every issue stands on its own and borrows at the current market flood rate at the time.
And then what, what do we have to do? I don't remember for geo-bonds, if we have to, like, I know we've always had a list of what we would like to do with it, but is there?
Are we locked into it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the whole point of a general obligation.
So we don't have to have like a 10-year plan of this is, and then if we have to do an natorium, it comes?
Right, and that's kind of that, that one slide that I showed, all those things were on there.
Yeah, okay.
We left a lot of those on the table.
Yeah.
Because needs change and then priorities change and things like that, so. And again, the last one, too, the, the main purpose was to kind of buoy up operations, right? Give it a little bit of relief, that was part of it, going to take off some of those things that would be natural operation expenses and use of bond. And the thing to keep in mind, and the other, I think a good analogy, I grew up on a farm, and that was a farmer borrowed money in the beginning, right? And then hardest time, paid off that loan, and then, then kept the rest as his profit, right? And that was every year, that was his operating loan. And so this is a little bit of a way to think about that, because we only have property taxes, our revenue, and state tuition for general, for education fund, and that's it. And so when they cap your operation fund, and that's all you have, and you're still going to have operations, you're still going to have facility needs, what do you do? It's a lot like thinking of a farmer, like, you know, doing an operating loan, it's the same thing, and we're doing this short-term, we're not mortgaging out the next three years, we're doing these short-term bonds and paying them off.
And I think the other, you know, I had to go back to my earlier comment, that wouldn't be a public process for the bonding, but that doesn't mean there wouldn't be a public process for the issuance, what the issuance of the next phase of bond would be.
Yeah, so this process, this is the, that'd be the initial hearing, you would still have, once you decided to do a issue of the bonds, you would have another bond resolution, public meeting, et cetera. So it would be the broad approval, and then each tranche would require a specific.
Okay, it does still require.
But we don't start back over with those first two hearings, I'm sorry.
When you talk about like the rates, they're set by the market, so that's for, no matter who's borrowing money, they, everyone has the same like interest rate on these jail bonds, or?
No, so.
So like a credit score matters?
Oh, the quality of the issuer matters, the, being from the state of Indiana versus other states that aren't as high a credit rating. But, so basically, we would sell your bonds and it sold, so we sold Fort Wayne Community School Bonds today. Their rates were as of the time we sold bonds. If I sold your bonds tomorrow, they wouldn't match exactly, because in effect, the market is volatile enough that there are changes. We, we would sell your bonds with a state rating, so all of your bonds have a state underlying rate, or state overlap rating, that basically the double A minus that the state has. They will make payments for you in lieu of you making, not making your payment, but they will take that from your education fund. But from an issue, from a borrower standpoint, somebody buying bonds, that is a higher security because they know if you default, the state's going to step in and make them hold. Now, it will come out of your funds eventually, so that's the first step. Then we sell based on a rating for the school district. So that would be your credit rating, and every school is slightly different. They, they range from a triple B to a triple A, that, most Indiana schools, and if you set it as an A rated, there are A minus, A plus, double A minus, double A, double A plus, so each of those levels vary.
So what are like the top three things a school district can do to be a triple A?
You guys have done very well with that. The problem is it's set nationwide, and the steps to move, for you to move up a full letter are out of your control. You would have to move your school district into a much more industrial area. There's stuff like that. It's, you're doing a great job and are, are very strong in your economic area and part of Indiana, rural Indiana, but you're going to, to move to a Fort Wayne, or Fort Wayne rating up another notch. Now, they're, they're not two notches above you, they're only one notch above you. Southwest Allen is two notches above you. So you can see there's just different combinations of more industry or more, higher home prices, you know, it, it varies. But you guys, as far as paying your taxes, all Indiana schools, that box gets checked all the time. But there are so many different dynamics that, you've done a great job, and we do every time we have a rating, talk about what could you do? Are you close to moving to the next category? Or are you in the middle? Lot of things that are strange that help a little bit are some of your board policies. Nobody in Indiana really has a debt policy as far as you follow the state requirements, but you don't have a debt committee. You issue bonds once or twice a year, you know, City of New York or City of Chicago has a very strong debt policy and they follow that to the letter. That gives the rating agencies an extra checkmark. It's something that nobody in Indiana does. You know, there's certain things like that. Your board policies as far are very solid, but you would have to have another level of financial, you would have to hire somebody just to run a program to move yourself up in some of those categories. So it's, it's really bent towards the big, strong school districts, the large districts.
How much does your fund balance?
Fund balances are an important part. But to swing your fund balance, so say you have, your fund balance is 25% across all funds, to get to the next rating, you might have to go up to 35 or 40%, and then you start pushing, well, now they're going to push back, is that too much? Why do you have so much? So it's never a clear target. We do continue to evaluate, and if we see things that we think can help, we'll suggest that. But you're very strong in that community. Indiana bonds sell very favorably across the nation, just because Indiana taxpayers pay their taxes and all of your bonds are backed by taxes. All of our bonds in Indiana are backed by a lifetime appropriation. So if you approve a bond issue for five years, you're approving that appropriation for those five years to make those payments. In California, those appropriations may only be approved, have to be re-approved every year. So all of a sudden, you think about that, you as a board, you have a new board next year and you decide, well, I don't want to pay that bond. Guess what? When we sell that bond day one, you're going to pay a much higher interest rate. So it, all of those things enter into it. I probably talked way too long, but you're very solid, but yes, you're exactly right. We are in the market on every six-month maturity, trying to sell your bonds to different buyers on every six-month maturity, and that varies day to day and credit to credit. People don't know where Ossean is. People may know where Fort Wayne is, nobody, they know where Gary is, which isn't a great thing, what we're trying to sell. So it takes a lot of pre-marketing to try to make sure clients know something about you, but that's where those ratings come in. Somebody in San Francisco could buy your bonds knowing you're at A, at A-rated school versus not knowing where Ossean is, they then lump all A-rated schools together and say, this is the range I'm going to pay in interest rates for a one-year bond, or for a two-year bond. And that changes daily. It changes by the minute, really. So.
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Anything else from the superintendent?
No.
Okay, moving on to action items, the authorization to publish notes, public hearing, and preliminary determination hearing.
Yeah, so again, all you're doing is authorizing to have a hearing, have a more in-depth conversation of what we just talked about.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion for approval?
I'll second it.
Have a second. Is there any, any other comments or questions? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item? Hearing done. All those in favor, right hand? All opposed? Okay, moving on to the approval of the Bowen Center MOU.
All right, so I'm going to say something about both of them, then you can do the, ask for motions, definitely, but, so, we had a presentation last with Kelly Goody on the two approval, our two supports begin from Bowen Center and Park Center, and just to know where you have those partners, so, just after your approval.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bowen Center one.
Have a motion for Bowen Center.
I'll second.
Have a second. Any additional comments or questions? Any other members, other questions to speak? Hearing done. All those approved, right hand? Opposed. Approval of the Park Center MOU.
Make a motion to approve.
Yes. Have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Any members of the public? Hearing done. All those for approval, right hand?
Yeah, we can't hear without that. This is a busy week, this week.
Upcoming calendar items. So tomorrow, big day.
Yeah, big day, excited. I mean, it's, you put a lot of work into this first day for sure, so looking forward to it and glad we're able to start here in a long time.
And then based on the action item, the authorization to publish notes, there will be a preliminary determination hearing on August 22nd, that's where.
Which one?
Oh, I'm sorry, August 26th, that will be the point in time where there'll be additional conversation. And then this preliminary determination hearing, and then ISBA, IAPSS Conference is September 15th through the 16th, so for board members, if you guys are going to go, please let me know, so we can all sign up as a group versus individually.
The earlier we do, the better, because we get some discounts.
I think the discount.
Oh, did?
Yeah. But I think the discount, they didn't, they show a discount if you do a group, but it didn't have a timing. So, the same thing, hey, you know, again, if you look at any other additional ISBA events that you want to attend, please sign up. Highly encouraged to attend. I want to go back to the Felber Heart Guardian Caps and just add an additional thank you to Felber Heart, and if any other board members want to say anything. I saw the video get posted, it's a great video. I know when we got the phone call and asked if this was something that we would be interested in doing, to me, it was a no-brainer. Student safety, whether it's in school or extracurricular activities, to me is, we can't do enough, and CTE is becoming, or I'm sorry, concussions and everything, that's just really becoming a problem all the way to the professional level. And so any additional safety that we can provide our students that hopefully, I mean, continue on, helps them move on even further in life, whether that's in professional athletic activities or education and not having to feel the effects of continuous concussion, I think is an important thing, so. If any other board members wanted to say anything on that.
I'll go to the next.
Yep, thank you.
Very thoughtful.
Yep. Hearing done. Any additional?
No.